Hi, good evening, everyone. How are you this evening? Welcome to the Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education Public Conference Meeting, today Monday, June 12th, 2023. The Board met briefly in executive session. First, just so everyone knows, we were at 6:00 PM in the Auditorium Performing Arts Center to honor the 2022 State Group Two North Football Champions. The football team was presented with their rings, as were the cheerleaders for their great championship win this past fall, received a bunch of accolades, and then we went into executive session at about 6:45 PM in Room 105 in James Caldwell High School here, 265 Westville Road in West Caldwell, New Jersey. The purpose of the executive meeting is to discuss personnel litigation, miscellaneous, and old business matters. That meeting has been advertised and is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, an NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. The matters discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required, and formal action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a meeting to which the public has been invited. The public conference meeting happening now in the James Caldwell High School cafeteria and via livestream at approximately 7:08 PM. The Board of Education, again, is being streamed, livestreamed, but all community questions and comments will be welcomed here in person at the James Caldwell High School cafeteria. The Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education Public Conference Meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, an NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. Notices have been sent to the progress Caldwell, New Jersey, the Star Ledger Newark, New Jersey, and Tap In to West Essex. Notices have also been posted at the Board of Education Business Office, Harrison School Building 104 Gray Street in West Caldwell, and have been delivered to the clerks of the Borough of Caldwell and the township of West Caldwell for posting. Brian, can you please take the role?
Yes. Student Representative Claire Kiernan.
Here.
Ms. Di Martini.
Here.
Ms. Elko.
Here.
Ms. Mack.
Here.
Mr. D'ambola.
Here.
Ms. Grosso.
Here.
We have five voting members present, and we have a quorum.
There. Okay, can everyone rise for the flag of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, are there any communications?
There is none.
Okay, we're going to move into our superintendent's report.
First, I'd like to invite up Adeline Lamons and Rosie Goodgold. They're from our middle school. One is, Adeline is from Citizenship, and Rosie is from Endurance House.
Good evening, Dr. Conklin and the Board of Education. Thank you for having us tonight.
I'm Rosie Goodgold from the House of Endurance.
And I'm Adeline Lamons from the House of Citizenship. This month at GCMS, many things were going on.
On April 28th, GCMS had its first academic bowl since COVID. Before this event, each house met in a meeting area and had its students in teams of two play a trivia Kahoot. A winning team from each house was determined, and that team went on to the academic bowl. Mr. Gaddick and Mrs. Zotinsky were the host of the game show styled event and asked trivia questions of all different topics. Every house had to answer on a whiteboard while the whole school watched. If the team answered the question correctly, they would get a point. The house with the most points would win, which this year was the House of Knowledge.
On May 25th, our school had a field day. Throughout this day, there were many fun games for the students to play for house points, such as flag football, handball, and spike ball. We also had an Italian ice station where everyone could relax and enjoy a cold treat. At the end of the day, everyone gathered on the blacktop to watch the house leaders, along with some eighth graders, do relay races and other games for house points. Overall, it was a really fun day, and everyone enjoyed it.
On June 2nd to June 4th, GCMS put on their spring musical, Once Upon a Mattress. The students in this production had rehearsed for several months. After a week of tech rehearsals, the actors and stage crew finally got to put on a fantastic production for everybody to watch. Everybody did an amazing job.
Throughout June, there have been many events for the eighth graders. On June 8th, the eighth graders went to the Hanover Manor for their eighth grade dance. The night was a blast. On June 19th, their field trip to Spring Lakes will be happening, and then on June 20th, the pool party will be taking place at Westville Pool. Then, to close out the year, the eighth grade promotion ceremony will take place on June 22nd at the JCHS football field.
Overall, being a house leader boosted my confidence in myself because I knew everybody in my house trusted me to lead them. I learned leadership skills and how to take charge of a group. I believe that the House project is very beneficial to our school because it brings everybody together and provides a healthy competitive environment.
Being a house leader was an amazing endeavor that helped me to use my leadership skills in order to meet new people. I was given the opportunity to help out the sixth and seventh grade students in giving them an example of a strong leader. I think the House project is a memorable experience in order to unite the school and help to establish a sense of community.
Thank you all for your support throughout the year for our GCMS community. Once again, thank you for listening and have a good evening.
Before we move on, I hope I'm not mistaken. Were you the queen in Once Upon a Mattress? And you did a fabulous job! Let's clap for her! I also just want to mention that the House project was the brainchild of Mr. Brown, so we would be remiss this evening without giving him credit for that, and so happy that his legacy lives on in the both of you and that his idea and his brainchild is giving you guys the confidence and the poise to stand up here and speak to us this evening. So, thank you so much, and thank you, Jim.
I'd like to ask Mr. Adamo, the principal at Washington, come up? So he can talk a little bit about Jonas Lupo.
Good evening, members of the Board, members of the community, and Dr. Conklin. I am very happy to be here speaking tonight to recognize the artistic talents and New Jersey pride of Jonas Lupo. Jonas, if you could stand up and come on over here? Jonas is a fourth grader at Washington School, and earlier this school year, he entered the Essex County Clerks My Essex County Fourth Grade Poster Contest. Jonas was chosen as a winner in this contest. Jonas's design featured beautiful illustrated images of Kip's Castle, Turtleback Zoo, Branch Book Park, and the New Jersey Devils. I'm a Ranger fan myself, Jonas, but I understand, and you know, it's all in the spirit of New Jersey, which to me is the greatest state, so it's all good. On May 24th, Jonas was honored at the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Justice Building in Newark. His teachers, Mrs. Anne Marie Mullin and Ms. Lisa Zevin, were in attendance, as well as his parents, to celebrate this recognition. Jonas, we look forward to seeing your winning poster in the Essex County 23-24 calendar and all the art that you will continue to produce in the future. Congratulations.
I just want to add that Jonas was only one of 15 winners in Essex County, and there were over 1,100 posters that were entered, and he was the top one of the top 15. And like Mr. Adamo said, his poster will be featured as the background of one of the months of the Clerks' 15-month calendar, which will come out in October, and it was amazing. And it's a very rigorous process that the posters go through to be chosen, and his truly stood the test, so congratulations.
Next, we have milestones, years of service to recognize. And for the people in attendance, we do have pins for you, and we also have retirees to recognize. And the principals that are in attendance and the retirees that are in attendance, the principal is going to come up and say something about you. Let me just go through the years of service first. Thirty-five years of service, Ms. Karen McIntyre. She is a special education teacher at James Caldwell High School. We have 30 years of service. Bruno Romano is a maintenance department, and he works for the district. And 25 years of service. Elizabeth Dean, she's a school nurse at Washington Elementary. Julia Holloman, social studies teacher at James Caldwell High School. Christine Forte, science teacher at Grover Cleveland Middle School. Paul Kataluski, social studies teacher at Grover Cleveland Middle School. Anne Marie Mullin, elementary teacher, Washington Elementary. Christopher Trous, Latin teacher, James Caldwell High School. And I'm going to list off the retirees, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Patola to come up after I finish reading the retirees. We have Jeffrey Bishop, science teacher, Grover Cleveland Middle School. Elizabeth Dean, nurse, Washington School. Anita DuBos, family consumer science teacher, James Caldwell High School. Robert DuBos, physics teacher, James Caldwell High School. Dorothy Gleisman, guidance counselor secretary, Grover Cleveland Middle School. James McIntyre, industrial arts teacher, James Caldwell High School. Karen McIntyre, special education teacher, James Caldwell High School. And Lori Wilson, guidance secretary, James Caldwell High School. In all total, almost 200 years of service, so thank you for your service.
Yes, we got to clap for that!
And I'd like to ask Mr. Patola to come up? And say some stuff, nice stuff, about Mr. Bishop.
Good evening, everyone. Before I begin, I also want to congratulate Paul and Christine for their 25 years of service to our students in the Caldwell West Caldwell School District. Congratulations. I would like to recognize Mr. Jeffrey Bishop, eighth grade science and iSTEM teacher. Jeff received his undergraduate degree in biology from Rutgers University in 1978. I don't hold it against you, I'm a Seton Hall graduate. Had a full career outside of education, but went back to school to earn his teaching certificate from Caldwell University in 2006 and his master's degree in curriculum and instruction from Caldwell University in 2008. Jeff first came to the Caldwell West Caldwell School District in 2008, when he completed his student teaching in seventh grade at Grover Cleveland Middle School, and after some time in West Milford, he returned to us as our eighth grade science and iSTEM teacher in 2010 and has been with us ever since. Jeff designed and implemented the iSTEM program, along with the tireless efforts of Jim Brown. He also co-founded and co-facilitated the infamous House Project, in addition to his leadership with the Ecology Club, and he has refereed countless championship games at our annual Hoopapalooza competition. Jeff has been happily married to Anne Bishop. He has a daughter, Stephanie, who lives and works in Arlington, Virginia, and is looking forward to retirement. Thank you, Jeff, for your passion, your energy, and your service to our school. GCMS will not be the same without Bish. Congratulations.
We're going to take a two-minute break?
Yeah.